Shannon. Hello, and welcome.
Oh, I'm unmuted now. Thank you. How are you?
We're doing pretty well. Oh, we have a visitor, I see.
Hey, Jack. So I was telling them that my internet might be a little bit delayed, so I don't want to like, hold up my hand at the wrong time and not, and have it be too late.
Okay, we could try a timing thing, one, two, three, raise your hand and see what happens. You ready? One, two, three, raise your hand. You were about a second behind. Okay. Not bad.
All right, good. That's better than it was before.
Okay. So how's life in California, Jack?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
It's been hectic. I'm packing about seventy boxes.
Oh, boy. It looks like you managed to get some sunshine at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's San Diego weather, or I guess Santa Rosa weather. In the high seventies and fifty-five percent humidity.
It sounds lovely.
Yes. The fires start.
It's already started in Northern California, apparently, up near Reading and places, so yeah, that's a problem.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start as soon as Matt, because I see we have a quorum. Okay, I see that our town manager is present, so I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask the town manager to read the disclaimer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to all residents and participants that this meeting's being recorded, and we'll post it on the town website. There's a public comment period at the outset of the meeting, and additionally, we allow for public comments after the council has had a chance to discuss agenda items that are labeled "public hearing" on the agenda that was distributed by the town and posted on the town website. Just ask that audience members, please, please hold your question until you've been called on, and use the raise hand feature if you, if you could before you speak. Before you make your comments, please state your name and the street that you live on for record-keeping purposes. And if this meeting is to get interrupted for, for any reason, I'll end the call and send instructions town-wide on a new link via email. With that, turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. So our first item is our public comment period. Is there, Mr. Town Manager, is any resident or guest indicated they would like to ask a question or speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Matt Zaff has raised his hand.
Thank you, Matthew Zaff, Dorset Avenue. I was just asking that the council consider adding to the agenda the items that the pool committee at their June pool committee meeting back had asked to have on the agenda. This was back at the end of June. We had asked for three items to be considered by the council at this meeting. A fourth item to be considered at the work session. But the three items that we had asked for to be considered at this meeting were to have on Friday, July 30th, a food truck at the pool. And for the pool to stay open one extra hour, that on Saturday, July 31st, we hold a town-wide swim-based Olympics competition, which some residents have already author offered to help try and organize, and including several say, older residents who like to participate in the early bird swim. And then that provided there are no issues with the July 30th food truck and late-night swim, that we also do so on August 13th and August 27th. These were originally recommended back in June to be added to this council agenda, and I'm just asking that the council reconsider and add them on to the agenda.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and I know that there's been conversations with several council members, and the next item is the approval of the agenda, and the a council will be able to add that. And, and I might point out that the, unfortunately, because of the transition and, and the the new council members and no liaisons, that this sort of got, and also given the fact that the, we didn't really know until, you know, recently, that all these opportunities were going to be available, so as I pointed out in email to you, I thank you for your hard work, Mr. Chair, and it is better in the future that these recommendations are made, you know, way in advance, and even in advance of the season, but I, but I totally realize of the special circumstances this year, and, and that's why I'm sure it's going to be added to the agenda. And thank you so much for the committee's work. Mr. Town Manager, is there anyone else who is?
No, not at this time.
Okay, our next item is the approval of the agenda, and so I would, I think there, maybe there's only one addition, and I think that Councilmember Heller is going to propose that addition, so I will ask her to make a motion to approve an agenda as she wants to amend it.
Okay, um, I wanted to, I'd like to add to the agenda from the pool committee request that on Friday, July 30th, that we have a food truck at the pool and an extra hour of the pool being open. And on July 31st, we would like to have a town Olympics at the pool. And are we going into the August part? Are we done?
What do you mean, the office part?
I mean, the August, because there, there are two things I thought.
No, I think, I think that, I think that what the chair was asking for was to add to the agenda those three items that you've mentioned, so I take it your motion is to move the agenda with the addition of that item? From the recommendation of the pool committee, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? I see the council president. Is there discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. So, so we will add that at the, and we'll add that at the, before the manager's report. But, Mr. Chair Zaff, if you, if you want to come back later, or I, I think that the council has enough information about your recommendation, but it's up to you, but thanks a lot. Okay, the next item is consideration of the, to consider the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move it.
I see Councilman Bar and second by Council President Circo. Is there discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? All this, but thank you very much. All right, our next item is a public hearing to approve a building permit application submitted by Leanne McDougall for the construction of a one-story addition and the removal of two trees on the property located at 5405 Greystone Street. So today is July 6th, 2021. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for a permit application number 210706A to consider the construction of a one-story addition and the removal of two trees on the property located at 5405 Greystone Street. This hearing is being audio-recorded. We ask that all speakers speak at, at one at a time, addressing the council when called upon, and to state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Next, the town council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Next, the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss among themselves the merits of the case, the findings of the fact, and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision, and the town manager will be asked to issue a permit with the conditions voted on by the council and enumerated in the town attorney's decision. We now begin this hearing with the presentation of the staff findings and reports. Mr. Town Manager, it's yours.
Yes, thank you. This has been a long time coming. The applicant initially submitted a preliminary application back at the end of April to us to do a preliminary review. The only thing we really were missing at that point was the county permit, and it was stuck in limbo with the county for about two months. So we finally, finally received the completed application with the county permit. I will turn it over to the town's engineering consultant, Doug Lohmeyer, for his report.
Good evening. The, the county issued their building permit on June 23rd. The applicant has applied to the town for a building permit to add three additions to the existing house. The existing house is located 26.4 feet from the front property line, approximately 22 feet from the left side property line, and approximately 11.7 feet from the right side property line. The applicant has submitted an established building line analysis that indicates that the established building line from Greystone Street is 26.3 feet. The application proposes to add an enclosed three-foot-by-10-foot enclosed vestibule at the left front side of the existing house. The proposed enclosed vestibule will be located 23.4 feet from the front property line and approximately 22 feet from the left side property line. The town code states that the vestibule may be, must, may project the maximum of three feet into the established building line. A second addition will be added, one, excuse me, a one-story, approximately 15-foot-tall addition to the left side of the existing house. The addition will be located 26.3 feet from the front property line and eight feet from the left side property line. Minimum side yard setbacks in the town code is eight feet on one side and a total of 18 feet for both sides. The plan proposes to add a covered porch in front of the addition on the left side of the house. Town code allows a covered porch to project a maximum of three feet into the established building line or 17.3 feet from the front property line. The covered porch will be 17.3 feet from the front property line, which complies with the code. All the proposed setbacks complies with the town code. Plan also adds a section of six-foot-tall fence and a gate on the left side of the house. The proposed building coverage is 1,965 square feet or 24.2% of the lot. The proposed addition to the building footprint is 403 feet, though a Montgomery County Stormwater Management Permit Plan is not required. The plan proposes to add silt fence around the disturbed area in the front and left side of the house. The site plan shows the location and flow path of the roof-down spouts. And the application included a parking plan, which includes two cars which will be parked on the lot and no cars to be parked on the street. I recommend that the applicant submit a wall check survey as soon as the two additions to the porch are constructed, and I recommend that the council approve the proposed demolition permit, building permit, and fence permit for the property at 5405 Greystone Street, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. I think Dr. Feather has her word.
Yes. The applicants requested the removal of two trees, a 12-inch hemlock and a four-inch hemlock shown on the report I prepared on the side of the one-story addition. And they, I recommend approval since the trees are too close to the new building, and also they're going to restore a patio there. So the bond requirement is $500 per tree or $1,000. They already have sizable canopy trees on property, tulip poplar and a black walnut on the south side, and a new red maple on the north side, northeast side. So I'm recommending as a reforestation plan, one canopy tree and one ornamental or evergreen tree to be replanted. The tree protection plan protects the front red maple on the street side, and also a note that no staging or storage of materials or equipment in the backyard. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Welcome to the applicant. And would, at this time, do you wish to present anything in addition or comment on the reports? And if you'd like to introduce any of your the members of your team, that would be fine, too.
I was wondering if Lou Baladimus was actually being considered the applicant in this. Am I being addressed as the applicant?
Well, you're the applicant, but you're, you're permitted to defer to your, to whoever you'd like, but thank you for being here.
Well, thank you very much for the introduction, and I will at this time defer to Lou.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, welcome, Mr. Distinguished Architect.
Jeffrey, thank you, Jeffrey. Good to see you. Other than Stephen, I'm looking at all new council members from, from my experience. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for considering the application. Thank you, Doug and Tolbert, for detailed analysis, and thanks, Matt, for coordinating the application for these past three months. It was a difficult process through the county. It was stalled. I don't know if you've seen that on other applicants coming forward, but I don't know if they're just over, overbooked right now or what, but it took a while. So this is a pretty modest addition to split double house. It's one-story visible from the street. But it's split front to back. The addition does not exceed the current roof line. And we are going to the limit of the setback on the, on the one side. I agree with Doug's analysis in terms of meeting all the setbacks. We will provide the wall check that he directed, and will certainly follow Tolbert's recommendations as far as the species and size of trees for the reforestation, and I'm ready to answer any questions that any council members have.
Thank you very much, sir. Council President Circo, do you have any questions?
I'd just like to verify that there are no waivers necessary or being requested for this permit application.
But no.
Are you asking to, who are you asking that to?
Lou or our town engineer.
I'll defer to Doug, but there are no, he, for his report, there are no, we're meeting all the setback requirements.
That's what I thought. Doug, am I correct? So, so that's correct. No waivers.
Doug, you're muted. Okay, thank you.
Yes, no stormwater management plan was required, so no waivers were needed.
And no waivers of setbacks either, correct?
Correct.
Because they're allowed to project in partially for that vestibule. Okay. Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barnes, do you have any questions?
Is there any change in how stormwater runoff is going to be handled as a result of the additions that are being proposed?
There is not. Currently, there are, I want to say four, I have to look at the plan again, but I want to say four to five downspouts, and we will have the same number of downspouts. And they are in approximately the same locations. We're going a little closer to the side yard than we were before, but there's a downspout in that location currently.
So is any more water going to flow towards neighbors, is the question?
Towards the street a little bit more, but not towards the neighbor. Neighbor to the north is uphill.
Is that your, are you done? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions? You're muted. You're muted.
No, I said, Robin actually covered my questions. Thank you, Robin.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
I have a question for Lou and Leanne. Are you comfortable with Dr. Tolbert's recommendation of the two trees? I didn't hear that clearly, Lou. He recommended, since they are on your property, and you have a lot of canopy trees already. I think you recommended one canopy and one ornamental. I just wanted to clarify, you're comfortable with those recommendations, and they fit your design needs?
Yeah, we've indicated them on the drawings. We, we had two two-inch caliber trees. We hadn't specified this species. But Tolbert has recommended either red maple, sugar maple, oak, black gum for the canopy tree, and then we have to pick.
You're fine with that, is what I'm asking. You're fine.
I am, but, I am, but Leanne should prepare.
Are you fine with that?
I am fine with that. I actually have about 10 saplings that Dr. Feather has seen on my back deck that I'm planning to plant. In addition, I'm very fond of Somerset's tree policy, and I will add that my neighbors on the north side, where the hemlocks are coming down, are very much in favor of those trees being removed.
Thank you, Leanne. No more questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rovak, do you have any questions?
Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering, too, Mr. Baladimus, so how does that work with the, the vestibule that's coming out of the front? Like, does that count towards the setback limitations, or is that excluded from the setback?
That is an allowable, allowable projection to the setback. Both the county code and the town code allow a three-foot-by-10-foot projection beyond the established setback line.
Okay.
Similar to a bay window.
Would you, Councilor Rovak, do you want to also confirm that with our town attorney?
Oh, sure, I would like to.
That's correct. So if you look at the, the site plan, it's shown as extending 3.1 feet from the front facade of the house. Now, the, the existing house is a tenth of a foot behind the required front setback, the established building line front setback, so they've got that point one to work with. And then the additional three-foot projection is permissible under the town code. The town code provides that, you know, although we have certain setbacks, front, side, and rear, certain projections are allowed to extend over the setback area because they help break up the visceral mass of a structure. And so this, you know, portico or vestibule is allowed to project three feet into the required front setback.
Okay, thank you. And, and then does the, is there anything with that side porch that that's all included within the setback, so they're not, like, there's no part of the house that will be going beyond that part except for that one foot in the vestibule?
That's right. Yeah, if you see that, that red arrow pointing That's right. Yeah, if you see that, that red arrow pointing at the side addition, that addition is right at the required eight foot side setback. So that, the addition doesn't extend over that dotted line. And the, the side setbacks also, there's a combined side setback. The sum of the setbacks from both sides can't exceed eighteen. But they've met that here since it's eleven point seven on the other side. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Eight foot on this side would have, would mean the house has to be ten feet on the other side and they've got eleven point seven on the other side.
So there's just like maybe one foot in question?
There's no feet in question.
Or one inch? I don't know, with the three point.
So sorry, I, I may have given you more detail than you needed. So if you look at the portico, you see the dimensions of the, the portico. One side extends two point nine feet from the house. The other extends three point one the right side. So the, the portico or vestibule is allowed to project three feet into the required setback. And this one does encroach three or extend three feet beyond the front setback. I was just pointing out that although this says three point one, they've got a point one in the bank, let's say.
Oh, got it.
Because the house is setback point one from the EBO.
Okay, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes. Oops, sorry. So I, I move that we approve the building permit application submitted by Leanne McDougall for the construction of a one story addition to the existing house. Removal of two trees on the property located fifty-four oh five Greystone Street. I should say removal and replacement of two trees on the property located fifty-four oh five Greystone Street.
Second.
Okay, I see Counselor Kumar. Mr. Town Attorney, that motion is legally and technically sufficient, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, but you may want to include in the motion that the permit is granted with the conditions recommended by the building permit administrator and the, the town arborist. Doug had suggested that there be a wall check survey when the additions are framed out and and then your Tolbert's conditions with respect to reforestation and bonding.
Okay, Mr. President, do you want to add that as your?
Yes, so if, if I can strike the replacement of the two trees, we leave the original motion as the construction of a one story addition to the existing house and removal of two trees on the property located fifty-four oh five Greystone Street. Plus the, plus compliance with recommendations of town engineer and town arborist.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, all of us in favor. All those opposed. Thank you. I think Mr. Balademas had a question about the decision.
I was wondering if the fence should be included in the motion.
Is, is the fence part of the building permit application?
Mr. Town Attorney, is that necessary?
I'm, I'm checking, Mr. Mayor. I do not, I do not recall seeing the fence in the application.
Doug has it in his report and it's on our drawing.
Yes, then it should be included in the motion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. President, can you make another motion about the fence?
But I, I gathered from Ron that it was sufficient because the permit does refer to the fence.
Oh yeah, it's in the permit, right, Mr. Town Attorney? So?
Yes, it is, it is.
Okay, so, so that, that was approved.
So the application is, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Hey, Mr. President's an excellent parliamentary procedures. Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Okay, the next item is the building administrator's report. Sir.
Yeah. A few items to go over tonight. At forty-five oh one Cumberland Avenue, the property has been purchased by a builder and they're preparing concept plans to move the existing house. The property is, is on two recorded lots, so the intent right now is that we'll be coming in for a building permit for two individual houses. They're working on the concept now, so the town hasn't seen anything yet on that property. At forty-five sixteen Dorset Avenue, the detached garage is completed. County's released their building permit and as soon as the applicant stabilizes the right of way within the towns and within Dorset Avenue, we'll do a final and that permit will be closed out. The permit for forty-seven twelve Essex is due to expire in July. The applicant says they don't need the extension, so we'll be checking with them on that. At forty-seven twenty-three Fallstone, they've applied for a demolition and building permit to remove the rear screen porch and construct in addition. The exterior work appears to be completed and they're doing the interior work and the county permit is still open. At fifty-five sixteen Trent, the applicant submitted a plan for several additions to the house. They're wrapping that up in the application. The contractor says they will not need a permit extension which expires on August twentieth. And at fifty-five oh eight Uppingham, the county has closed the building permit, but the sediment control is still open. As soon as that permit is closed and the road enforcement officer does a HVAC sound check, the town will be closing that building permit. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Mr., Mr. Council President, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you. Nice support.
Counselor Barr, do you have any questions? You're muted.
No questions.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Heller.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
None from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rovak.
No questions.
Thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to approve the removal of the following town trees as recommended by the town arborist. A red oak at fifty-eight thirteen Surrey, a sugar maple at forty-eight eleven Fallstone, a sugar maple at forty-five ten Cumberland, an elm in Capella Park and a kusa dogwood in Capella Park. Mr. Town Arborist, Dr. Feather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All, all, all of these are, except for the elm, are, are dead. And the elm is ninety percent dead. We're, we're going to replace all these in the fall. And the other thing I might add is I think it was brought up to, this is about dead or permit, but about walking the stream bed to look for obstructions where trees have fallen over. And I did that last week and found six sites where we'll probably have Lee's Tree Service cut some trees up and get them out of the creek. There are two other sites where there are fallen trees, have been fallen for quite a while. It's not where the stream was restored. And I think those are actually helping with, with preventing erosion and we're going to leave those. So I'll make a report on those and give it to Matt and then get that work done this summer.
Thank you, sir. Council President Serka, do you have any questions?
None. I was going to ask about the, the trees in the stream, but you already answered it. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr, do you have any questions?
I have just a theory. Are there any circumstances, Tom, where you would leave a dead tree because that tree is not using?
Yes, there, there are two sites on, I don't have the addresses where the trees have been across the stream for some time, years. And in fact, I think one of the residents actually built kind of a dam on one side to prevent erosion of the, of the bank behind. And that's working. So I would leave those. There's another one that's doing the same thing. So we're, 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 but where I'm looking at mainly is where the train was, the stream was restored by WSSC. You know, re, reworked. And those are, those are hindering what's supposed to be happening there. So we'll get those out.
Is that, is that it, Councilmember Barr? Okay, thank you. Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kumar, do you have any questions?
Questions, Dr. Feather. For those trees that are adjacent to homes, are the residents informed of these trees coming down or actively aware that they're coming down?
Yeah, I'm going to talk to Matt maybe about posting these ahead of time before we remove them, just so everybody knows.
Like, surprise. Couple of weeks ahead of time.
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question is?
So, Counselor Kumar, you remember that is an issue that is on the agenda to work on in the future because we don't really have clear policies that have been approved by the council. So I'm glad you asked that question. What's your next? Go ahead with your next one.
Yeah, Matt, I, I think it's important to let town residents know if something is coming down that's adjacent to the homes.
Right.
I think the second question is, these are two trees, I think, Dr. Feather, you know which two I'm talking about, that are not on town land. They belong to Somerset House. One of them is quite sizable. It's been dead for, I think roughly a year, looms over the pool. If it comes down, it will be a catastrophic issue for the town, both in terms of the potential of that tree hitting the maybe pool, the kiddie pool, because it's looming right over it and potentially damaging the pool house. I know that you and, and the town manager are in conversation with Somerset House. I'm wondering as part of your update now, even though these are not on town land, if you can give us a quick status on where that conversation stands.
Matt's been speaking with the management over there. I thought they were getting a, a bid.
Yeah, they, they, last week, they walked the property with their arborist contractor and so they just received a bid and so now they need just a formal approval for it, but they're going to coordinate with, with me and Tolbert because they, they may need to access those trees actually from the Somerset property, but.
But in, but in the meantime, don't we need to give them written notice? Because if we don't, then if it falls, then it's our responsibility.
Well, they have a report that I prepared.
I know, but I think with, Mr. Town Attorney, don't we need to give them written? Put, put something in writing to put them on notice?
I think that would be a good idea, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, so we'll do that. We, we can do that.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rovak, do you have any questions? And Dr. Feather?
No, I was going to ask about that same tree because I didn't know it's already been in the works, but I've seen it. So I'm glad that it's going to get taken care of.
I'm so glad you're on top of things already. Your brief, your brief time in office. Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
No other questions or comments.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are you prepared to make a motion?
I can try. You want me to do it?
Yes. Oh, for a camera. Please do.
Wordy, it's wordy. I'm just going to read it from the, okay. Motion to approve the removal of the following town trees as recommended by the town arborist. I list all the trees, right? Okay, red oak fifteen inch, five eight, one three Surrey Street. Sugar maple two inch, four eight, one one Fulton Avenue. Sugar maple four inch, four five one zero Cumberland Avenue. Elm twenty-one Capella Park, Dogwood five Capella Park. Acceptable?
I think, isn't there one? Oh, yes. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there discussion? I saw Heller first. Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you very much. The next item, public hearing motion to approve of a contract with the Low Impact Development Center to provide a stormwater master plan to guide the town's efforts to address stormwater issues at an amount not to exceed forty-one thousand dollars as recommended by the Stormwater Study Committee. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have discussed this a little bit before. This is a proposal that was recommended by the Town Stormwater Study Committee. We are joined by Mr. Neil Weinstein from the Low Impact Development Center. So he's prepared to answer any questions that the council has, but I also included some other projects that, that the town had, excuse me, that that the Low Impact Development Center had done before, as well as some of their references. So just a, a quick reminder that this is beyond the budgeted amount when we had set our annual budget. However, I think it would, it would make sense to use the money that the town had budgeted for a, a study of our road system and use it for this purposes as I think what we've learned from this study may very well have an impact on, on what we decide to do with our roads and, and, and that surrounding infrastructure. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to the council for questions and hopefully I or Mr. Weinstein can answer.
Is Mr. Weinstein, Weinstein, did I pronounce it right? Do you? Would you like to say anything before you take questions? Either one, okay. Did you want to say?
Weinstein.
Weinstein, did you want to say a couple of sentences before I take questions?
No, this, the only thing I'd like to say is that, you know, we had a lot of involvement with members of your stormwater committee and looking at previous projects and scope and I think we're really excited as a group to work on this. It's kind of a, it's a really neat pro, neat project. We'll call it neat project. It's a lot of really good potential, which we thank for the town and I think that, that a lot of the challenges that you have with especially older communities and people are putting additions and rebuilding houses and looking at the infrastructure and how it's affected by all this is a, a really good project and I think it's, sounds like it's very timely for you.
Okay, thank you. And I, and I do want to commend the Stormwater Study Committee for the incredible work they're doing and the great job they did in procurement and finding you, Mr. Weinstein. And I, I also want to say, as I've said before, that as the town manager noted, there, there wasn't this amount of funds put in the budget because we really didn't, we really didn't know at the time, but given that the committee has done so much work in identifying the, the extent of the, of this problem throughout the town, this is, I view this as a very small investment towards this, the solution of the problem. It's, I think it's modest compared to the, to the size of the problem. So thank you. With that, Council President Serka, do you have any questions?
No questions. I'm very impressed by the package.
Thank you. Counselor Barr.
First of all, I, I'm very impressed by the Low Impact Development Center's prior work. It, it certainly is great expertise for the town and thank you for, for, for doing this. I mean, in terms of budgeting and remember, the American Rescue Plan funds are coming to us very soon. And this is the kind of project actually that these funds are, are quite likely and to be directed towards and, and, and it's permitted under, under that guidance. So we can cover it one of two ways is what it will stand.
Yes, thank you for that, Counselor Barr and for all the, the good work you've done in following the, the rescue plan. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
No, I just think it's a great proposal. So thank you, Robin, for all that you've done and everybody else.
Thank you. Counselor Kumar.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jeffrey. Thank you, Mayor Jeff, Mayor Slavin. I do have some questions. Mr. Einstein, it's great to meet you face to face. I sent you a bunch of questions by email. I appreciate you responding. I've done that on behalf of the council. And I've shared my notes and I believe Matt has included them in the packet, at least the, the one, um, uh, reference call I had. And in general, just for the benefit of the council, uh, very favorable. I think your responses were very satisfactory. The reference call was satisfactory. Uh, in particular, there was an emphasis on your ability to identify potential funding sources, um, for this kind of work, which I think would be interesting for us as well. I just have two questions of clarification. And I see that Julie Greenberg is on as well. And so I'll table both of them just for, for clarification. We are looking for a comprehensive plan that addresses both public and private lands. But in, in both the proposal and your responses to my question, you know, you, you say that, yes, but we will focus on private properties. And I wanted to clarify, what does that mean? And what is the implication of that? I'm not saying we shouldn't do that. I just want to understand that. What is the implication that if you're doing a comprehensive plan, what does it mean on top of that to then focus on private properties? That was one question. And then the second question.
Well, let's let him answer that.
Uh, I can, I can table both my questions and then, then we can get a response to both. Is that okay?
Okay, whatever, whatever you want to do.
Thank you. And then the, the other question was just the, the data sources you will use. I, I think this is a minor, again, clarification issue. As, as has been noted, the Somerset Stormwater Committee has done a great job collecting data. There was a survey that was conducted. That's a foundation for the work that we are intending to do with you. Will you be conducting additional surveys? What would be the sources of data exactly that you will use? Uh, I, I didn't get a clear sense of that either in your proposal or, or in response to questions. And I, and I'm happy for you, Dr. Einstein, to answer that, or, or Julie Greenberg or another member.
Well, yeah, now is the time to ask Dr. Weinstein.
Okay, okay, so to you.
I'm not a doctor, but thank you, though. Made my parents happy.
Yes, we'll call them.
Um, so the first is the data, you know, you, you've had several studies done. The county's done some studies. Um, you've done, there's a watershed study and there's a really good survey. Can, first of all, can you hear me okay? Because my connection is not so super.
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, so, so you have good, a lot of good data sources and, uh, you know, I could tell from today's meeting, there's a lot of involvement and interest. Um, so that's very helpful as part of the outreach and informing, uh, decisions and forming a framework that, uh, is acceptable to, to the study. And, um, so that, and then the county has a pretty good GIS system. And then we'll augment that with field visits to verify, um, kind of a desktop analysis that, that will do, um, from the GIS. And so it, it kind of is a, you know, it, it builds, builds on each other or, or a foundation. So part of it is available information. And then you have a great source of feedback that, that's going to help us inform the, through the surveys.
Got it. And the first, on the scope of the study, just clarity on that. Can you hear me, by the way?
Yeah. So most, one of the things that I think that we're finding out in our work, you know, we're, we're doing some climate change work. Is that a lot of the contributions are small scale, um, and, and kind of, uh, on, on private property. I mean, the public property, I would, I don't know what is exactly for Somerset, but it's usually, you know, fifteen or twenty percent max that are, you know, really in the public properties or, uh, outside of the street network. So a lot of focus, what we say the focus on the residential is because a lot of the things are happening, you know, additions, uh, flows being rerouted, uh, soils being compacted over time. And, uh, that has a pretty big contribution. So what, you know, we're recommending is that you really look at this at a smaller scale and a smaller scale impacts and how private property owners can really invest in their property. With, um, you know, because I think one of the things that we found out from Julie is was, you know, there's been a couple of million dollars uh, being spent of private funds to improve properties. And, um, you know, especially on the drainage part that people have spent. So I, I think a focus on the residential, that's kind of like the big piece of the pie. But, um, the infrastructure part to us is not that complicated. Right. It's, you know, what do you do with the roadway? You do a curb bump out. Or, you know, what do you do with an alley? Uh, you have permeable payments in it. So those type of things are, and, and that's why I say, um, you know, it's emphasis, because I think that's where the big, the big bowl of fruit is, uh.
Got it. That means just to absolutely clarify, you will have proposals for what we do in public right away. Like you've had, you have the Ebert Street, you have specific recommendations for public.
Yeah.
You'll get those as well.
Yeah. And like I said, the challenge is, you know, what are we going to talk about? You know, you, you have, uh, Dr. Feather, you know, you know, what's going to happen with the tree canopy over time? You know, how does that affect some of the stormwater? You know, does it, we have migrating species, do? We increase the tree canopy. There's all those kinds of issues and those are things that are primarily on residential properties. Um, I'd also like to add Greg, um, Canito is here from Rainplan. That was part of it. Um, when you talked about jumping into other sources of revenue to do this. Um, and he's going to take the lead on doing that, uh, because they've been looking at incentives programs throughout the region. And, um, particularly getting the word out, you know, I'm not sure everybody knows that you can go and get money from the county to improve your properties. You know, we can't stress that enough.
Well, once again, just to clarify, those are programs that could be made available to individual property owners. But there are also programs where there could be funding available at the town level, at the town government level. Is that right? When I, when I mentioned that at the beginning, I was referencing the latter, uh, which came out of my conversation with, with your reference from, uh, I forget where that, that is, but one of your references mentioned that you were very good at identifying sources of.
Right. There's, there's, uh, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation has grants, Chesapeake Bay Trust has a source of grant funding, uh, for green streets. For example, you can get some money for planning, construction. And, um, a lot of the way that we will write the report will lead into, um, uh, or set up the, your project so it's fund, fundable.
Great.
Especially in the infrastructure, because that's, that's what I love.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, thank you. Councilor Rovak, do you have any questions?
Oh, sorry. Um, so I apologize because I am a newcomer to the town council. Um, so I was just wondering, as far as.
No need to apologize.
Well, I might not have all the background that the fellow.
Ask all your questions.
Um, so I was just wondering, um, so when you do look at the private houses and like, you know, all the impact that we're seeing from these different houses that are, um, having, you know, the runoff and whatnot, like, so they ultimately go into, or, you know, they drain into a city system or the city streets or, or whatever it is. Who determines like, like if those drains and things like that can, can, can contain the runoff that we're now seeing from the changes on the residential private property into the public kind of domain? Do people watch that? Or is that something that you study and look at the different changes of the water amounts into those drains?
Um, we would not get that granular for this. Um, I don't think, I think we would identify issues, uh, that we observe or we have information back from the survey or that we do in our desktop analysis and say like, you know, here may be a problem area and we would confirm that. Um, but it wouldn't be a detailed engineering analysis where we would say this pipe has, you know, it's fifteen inches in diameter and it should be twenty four inches because of all the water. Um, but we may come back with a result that would say, this is an undersized system because it keeps overflowing into the street. Or, you know, we've noticed, you know, we see a lot, um, at times, we, we've seen in the region a lot where you'd have a, a swell or a small channel that goes in the back of several houses. And, uh, because of the changing rainfall, now that is a, a river or a swamp. So, you know, you have to make a recommendation about how to convey that water out so it doesn't damage property.
And then have you ever been able to work within then like the county structures where they would also like make improvements into the overall infrastructure of a town like that?
We have made recommendations, yes. And that's like some of the studies that we're doing now is how to, you know, how the infrastructure needs to accommodate climate change.
Okay, so that's all part of the report?
Yes, that would be part of the report.
Okay, great. No questions. No other questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there, is anyone, is any guest or resident requesting to make a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are you prepared to make a motion?
But I've, I have a question on procedures here, Jeffrey. Do we need to make a separate motion for the, the budget to move the money? Or can we just do it all in one motion?
Let, let's ask our expert, Mr. Town Attorney. What do you suggest?
It, it can be all one motion. I mean, uh, the budget amendment would require a super majority. Four votes out of five.
So, so it sounds like best practice would be to separate it. All, just because of that.
It's your choice, sir, in making a motion.
I'll, I'll separate, we'll take it one at a time. I move that we approve a contract with the Low Impact Development Center to provide a stormwater master plan to guide the town's efforts to address stormwater issues and an amount not to exceed forty one thousand dollars as recommended by the Stormwater Study Committee.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I saw Heller first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you.
Okay, and then as the follow-up motion, I move that we, uh, shift, what would it be? Thirty one thousand dollars from a road study, Matt? How much do we, do we need to shift?
Yes, that's right. Uh, thirty, thirty one thousand.
Okay. So, so I, I move that we shift an amount not to exceed thirty one thousand dollars from our road study budget line to support the contract with the Low Impact Development Center.
Is there a second? I see Heller. Is there discussion?
I, I'll just bring up the comment that I made earlier, which is that we may not need to do that because the American Rescue Plans.
Yeah.
Who could cover it.
Excellent point.
Understood as part of this and that's all right.
I have a. I think, I think you might want to do it just, and then I think you need to do it because you don't know when you're going to get the money.
It's supposed to come by July fifteenth.
Well, but we don't know tonight. So I think, I think, I mean, I think it's a good practice to do it, but Counselor Kumar, did you have a question?
Uh, Steve, this covers thirty one of the forty one.
There's already ten in the budget for.
Ten is already in budget. Okay, great. Yeah, I agree. We should, we should do it.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Weinstein and Mr. Canito. Thank you for joining us and we look forward to getting that report. Uh, the next item, public hearing motion to authorize the town manager to sign an agreement with the Lego Energy, a renewable power provider to provide a net reduction in the town's carbon footprint as recommended by the Environment Committee, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Environment Committee did some preliminary research on this to switch over from, uh, to switch the town so that it's getting its energy supply from a one hundred percent renewable energy sources. Um, I did some follow-up research and I included a, a table for you all. Um, at the time, I think that the Environment Committee did their research. One company was less expensive than the other, but, um, now this, this new company, LIGO, is, um, a little bit cheaper. So the, the costs do fluctuate. Um, I'm recommending that we, we do a six-month agreement with them and, uh, there's no penalty to, to change if, if things change. We'll continue to monitor it and, um, bring it back for consideration. Either at the conclusion of this contract or, uh, if there's a, a better opportunity for us.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Counsel President Circa, do you have any questions?
Uh, just one, Matt, just to clarify or emphasize, uh, as I look at the chart you put together, which I, I appreciate, it appears that in addition to reducing the town's carbon footprint, we will also save the town an estimated four hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Yeah, that's, that, that was projecting it out for twelve months. So it's really probably more, you know, uh, the twelve-month contract with this company was a little bit higher than the six-month. Um, so that's why I suggested the six-month to, it was the better financial deal, but, uh, equally as good, um, environmentally.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Member Barr?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering whether the motion should be to move to hundred percent renewable supplier of electricity and allow the town manager to choose which one based upon cost considerations rather than going particularly with Lego. Because we couldn't be back in six months with another one. And then six months later with another one, if we don't do something like that.
Okay. Did you, Matt, did you answer? Okay. Okay, that's the only question, right? Councilmember?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Member Heller, do you have any questions?
You know, I actually agree with Robin because some of my questions, which I had a whole load of them, were really along the line of how, you know, what if the prices really change? Because these prices fluctuate, I gather, in general, you know, and what, what if they go out of business? You know, it was those kinds of questions. So I think if we give Matt the ability to change it up when need be, because we don't know if these guys stay in business. But also I just wondered, do we, do we know, um, where these guys get their power from, Matt?
Um, so the, this company is based out of the Chicago, Illinois area. I did inquire about what the, the mix of their energy supply is, and they said that it was, they, they couldn't give me an exact, um, exact numbers because it does fluctuate based on, based on what's available and, and what, what makes sense for them. But it was a mix of hydroelectric, solar and, and wind, wind power. Those were the three sources of, of power.
Now, I'm assuming if this doesn't work for us, for whatever reason, if, if it gets too hard to negotiate new contracts every six months or whatever, if it makes economic sense, can we go back to Pepco?
Yes, yes, at, at, at any, at any point, yes.
Okay.
And one, one of the reasons that I was recommending this company, uh, in addition to, um, the cost and, and the, the environmental impact was because they, uh, they don't have a fee for canceling an agreement with them either. But, uh, to, to your and, and Robin's point earlier, I, I think the, the thing that would not be in the town's interest, at least financially, would be to allow the contract to, um, to, to pass. So for a six-month agreement to pass, then we move to a variable rate. And I think that's where they really. then we move to a variable rate, and I think that's where they really, they can, they can jack up the prices.
Because some of the, some of these prices on these guys almost seem too good to be true. So that's why, you know, a close eye on it, I guess, is a good, good idea.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kumar, give any questions?
Yes, Matt, thanks for all your work on this, and I think this is very exciting that we are exploring this. I have a, as you would imagine, a series of questions on process. How did you identify these companies to review is one question. The other question is, did you, is is your recommendation primarily based on desk research? Or did you contact other townships or municipalities that have used them? Are you aware of any of our neighboring municipalities that are conducting a similar process, or is there any data points from our, from our neighbors that you included in your, in your review? You know, I have, I have actually seven, eight other similar questions about about the process, but let's start with those three. And then we can go from there.
Sure, so first, first one's easy, so Pepco on their website actually is required to show, show who energy supplier alternatives are in in the state of Maryland, so you plug in your, you plug in your your zip code and it will have a list of probably, there's probably thirty-five companies or so, not all of whom are renewable, but they have a certain sets of information, one of which was what percentage of of the supply is renewable energy? And so went through those and basically picked out the ones that were one hundred percent renewable for you. I left out a couple on there because their prices were were just so much higher that it, it didn't, it didn't occur to me, I guess, at at that point that it made sense to necessarily even include them much further in the process. In terms of other data points for what I do, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, I I believe and I can follow up with you and send you. LIGO did have a few a few municipalities that they have listed as partnering with. And some of the other, some of the other companies did as well. None of them, as I recall, were were from our immediate vicinity, and I did not follow up on references or or anything like that.
Okay, and have you, what is the implication of this transition? Do, are there costs involved in transitioning to an alternative energy provider infrastructurally? So, you know, what, what, you know, this is the cost of the service, but is there a cost of the transition to the service and have you considered that?
There's, there's no upfront fees or costs associated with it, they.
It's a flip of a switch to an alternative provider.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I don't know if it's a physical switch, but but yeah, yeah.
Do that in your own, you can do that at your own property, too.
Well, we are, we are all solar here, so.
Oh, I see.
Okay, and and to double, you know, click on Debbie's question, we can go back to Pepco and there are, there is no, I only, I'm asking these questions because while this was on our agenda, I don't believe we got into it in the working session, we didn't detail it, we just never dug into it, so.
Questions to put on the record.
Yeah, I'm fine with us moving forward with it, but I just, I'm only looking at it now.
Yeah.
That's right.
Those are good questions.
Yes.
I I forgot my train of thought, so we, it's, it's, it is not a literal switch, but it is easy to transition on and it's easy to transition off.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Now, part, I think the inspiration for this was born out of the Environment Committee Chair had kind of undergone a pet project of his own, not just at his own home, but some of his neighbors to to convince them to switch over to.
And other Somerset residents.
Right.
The Clearview.
And 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 his experience was with Clearview because I I think at the ti- at that time, they, they presented the best opportunity, I think they, they had some promotion as well to to get people referred over to to join them. So for for those various reasons, I think that's why he had gone with them.
And what would this this covers, the, what sources does this cover for the towns? So we, sorry for my very foolish question, but this is lighting of the town hall, like.
It's, it's a good, it's not foolish.
What is specifically covered?
What, what is our?
It's, it's, it's three different things that are covered on four different bills that the town receives monthly from Pepco, and so one is the town, the town hall power, one is the the pool power, and then the third is the streetlights in town.
Got it, got it, so this would shift all three or just the town hall?
All three, correct.
All three, okay. And, okay, then that begs a couple of other questions, have we, have we looked at, for instance, moving the entire town hall to solar? And, and.
I think it's something that we would discuss at a work session.
Okay, so we have not looked at that. If, what is the implication of we are in the, you know, it's in your manager's report and a question I had, we are in the middle of making sure that our streetlights are functional.
That we will also, I don't know that that's related to this thing here.
Here, here's the question, the question is, to what extent that is impacted by this transition? I think that's related here.
Right, I, I don't, I don't think it has any. This is just the current, this is just for the current, for the, the current. That'll be a good question for when, when.
Somehow that is impacted, then it impacts this decision, at least for me.
So, not, not to my knowledge, I guess the the follow-up, what you're making me think of then to to ask them that I could follow up for you is basically assurances on the, on the supply itself, and so what, do they ever need to black out because I don't know that, you know, that the the dam, you know, wasn't working, so they didn't have as much hydroelectric or something?
Well, all of this is making me think, this is now to Steve and Robin, if maybe we, we have this on our working session, you know, and and just sort of give ourselves the space to think, to think through this clearly. And so that we can be supportive to to Matt when he's out front investigating.
Well, why don't you, why don't you bring that up when the, this is the time now for Councilors ask questions, then when you have the discussion about whether you're gonna agree to this, then you can.
I I'm worried that, based on what I've heard and read, those are the questions I have, but I'm also worried that there are other questions.
Okay, well, that's, those are good comments to make when you're debating whether you're gonna approve this or not.
So no more questions, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Rovak, do you have any questions?
Um, well, I don't really understand a lot of it, but, um, so why would we not want to make this change?
Well, that I think you should, that, I think that, that's not really a question for Matt, that's something that you want to talk amongst yourself, debate amongst yourselves.
Okay.
So, right now is just the questions of Matt about how this would work. And then when you're all debating whether you're gonna approve this tonight, that's when you ask that kind of questions.
Okay, I will table my question, no more questions for me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Town Manager, are there comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Uh, yes, we do have one, uh, one resident who's raised their hand, Mr. Kumar Vaswani.
Oh, excellent.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Kumar Vaswani.
You're not gonna show your face?
No, my camera's not working.
Okay.
I just bought a new one. Just one question, if the company goes bankrupt, uh, you know, goes out of business or the wind stops blowing, Pepco will keep supplying you with power, is that correct, no matter what happens to the company? And then you just sort out the, you just sort out the billing issues later?
That's my understanding, Kumar, and ba- basically that we, we still rely on Pepco as transporting the electricity to us, but we are paying this energy supplier for the energy we use.
Is that?
Thank you, yeah, I think you answered it.
And did you have any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. Let me point out that Mr. Vaswani is one of our most, and now that Jack Frink has moved, Mr. Vaswani is, I think, are one of our most engaged citizens, thank you for attending the meeting. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, are there further comments or questions from residents or guests?
No, not this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay, now is the opportunity for the council, someone could make a motion or you can debate it, and I will go ahead, Councilmember Kumar.
Uh, not a motion, I, I think I'll respond to Shannon's question, I think we should make this transition. Uh, I'm just, I want us to be able to think through it, you know, part of our role, I believe, is to be a sort of a brain trust for Matt and the town and the town government to explore options for us. And at least I individually don't feel I was given enough time to think through all of this and and provide meaningful advice, and so my, my only request is, I'm, I'm fine to go along with the collective, as Steve knows, I'm fully supportive of this, I think it's an important issue. And I just felt, as, as, again, process is extremely important, especially for big decisions along these lines. And if we can, you know, in a, in a working session, just think through it and and maybe it gives Matt a bit more time to do a little bit more homework, that was my, that's the, that's behind my questioning, not to question the overall intent.
Oh, no, I was just, I was just wondering, like, you know, what the pros or the cons were for it? And if, if, you know, if there was a.
The pros are very clear to me. Which is that I think, you know, we have alternative sources of energy available, we should be prioritizing those, given the broader climate ecological implications, and also, these are things that we can do. You know, there are things in our control, this is a way in which we can have impact, and it turns out, as Steve pointed out, based on the nature of the contract, at least if it's a year-long contract, that we can potentially save five, roughly five hundred dollars a month, which itself is also an added cherry on this, and so those are the pros, the cons are the ones that I'm struggling to wrap my mind around, and I think they are more procedural, given Pepco's role, just there are gears there that are not clear to me, and maybe I'm overemphasizing them and they're pretty straightforward, so I'm happy to be educated by the rest of the council.
I think, I saw Robin first and then Debbie.
Yeah, so I will propose a motion somewhat different from the one on the agenda, which is that we uh, know require the town to move to one hundred percent renewable energy for electricity, and we authorize the town manager to find the most cost-effective supplier of that energy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I saw Heller, okay, now, now you can discuss that, is there discussion on this motion?
Yeah, let me just say a little bit about it, so that.
Yeah, speak to your motion.
Right, yeah, what it's about, I have been with an alternative supplier for ten years now, in fact. Um, and this one is a hundred percent wind energy that I use.
Who is that?
Uh, oh, it's Washington something, I'd have to look them up, I mean, it's ten years ago I did it, you know, it's just in the background now. The point is that Pepco still bills you. And they show you the charges that are associated with the supplier that you have, which are your electricity charge. Pepco still has charges for you on your bill, so you don't lose them entirely because they are indeed transporting you through the line, so you're paying for their work transporting the electricity to you, even though this other company is supplying the electricity. A lot of the companies actually aren't producers of energy, they're, they're instead paying for, in my for my company, they're paying the wind energy suppliers to develop more wind energy capacity, that's what they're doing. So they're not deliberately, they're not actually supplying the energy, they're paying the wind energy companies to get more. And I don't know whether Lego falls into that or not, whether they're giving money to solar, et cetera, to build more solar, or whether they're actually buying the energy, but in any case, it is a very simple process, it's, it is just a click, everything is taken care of, and then you gotta still get a bill from Pepco, it just shows part of the bill from your supplier, the rest of it from Pepco.
Okay, is there further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Are you, are you voting, Councilor Kumar?
Sorry, I, I was going to respond to Robin, that moved quickly for me. I just, I don't feel I have enough data on this, but I will trust you, Robin.
So you're voting for it?
I will vote for it, but I do.
Okay, thank you.
Quickly ramrod it, I would add.
Are we allowed to abstain? You know, so you can always go for against. More things.
We can discuss when it's appropriate to abstain at a future work session, and we will also further discuss this, I think the Council President will probably want to put it on a work session for discussion, too.
I was just gonna say, Kabir, you raised some, some good questions. And and I think it merits the council spending some time just to, for us to really understand how the process works. And if Matt has any more questions about signing up and if you want some guidance from us, we can provide that at the work session.
Yeah, but just for the record, ideally we do that before we vote on a motion.
Well, this.
Ideally.
I mean, honestly, honestly, I think you're right that this should have come to a work session before it was put on the agenda, and I, I don't recall why, but we'll, we'll get back to you on that, but thank you, I think.
We'll set a precedent.
I think it was an excellent discussion.
That's a good point.
I think it was an excellent discussion.
Problems together.
I, I think it was an excellent discussion, and I think the decision that was made was reflected where the council is. Thank you, the next item, public hearing motion to authorize the expenditure of up to eight thousand dollars for the purchase of a new tent for the Somerset Town Pool, Mr. Town Manager.
This is one that I think we did discuss at the last work session, at this point, it actually I was able to find some, some alternative options, and so I think the cost to to repair it is over three thousand dollars, the cost to purchase a new one is four thousand dollars, and I expect that a new one would last us you know, in the twenty-year range, like, like this past tent, whereas the repair, they could they could give us, they, they said they'd feel comfortable for the next year, but after that, it's kind of a shot in the dark, and so the current tent is developing some holes in it and is not able to keep the water out quite as well as, as we'd like, and so this, this is a request that came from the Pool Committee. And my recommendation was to just go with American, American tents on this and purchase, purchase the tent for forty, forty-three hundred fifty dollars.
Okay, thank you, Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you for the research, Matt.
Thank you, Councilor Barr, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Councilor Heller, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Kumar, do you have any questions?
Just to clarify, is this a recommendation from the committee, or is this also a recommendation from the implementation? That oversees the management of the pool, I believe there is a.
Right.
Right, and so I, I want to make sure that that group has reviewed this prior to the council.
Yeah, yes.
They, yeah, that, that group has, has made a recommendation to replace, replace the tent and had we had left that meeting to say, Matt, look up what the options are for us to replace the tent, and so this is sort of the next step in that.
But this kind of, this kind of item really isn't. But this kind of, this kind of item really isn't, the tent isn't really under the jurisdiction of the pool committee or the pool management team. Because it's owned by the, it's, it's a tent, it's the town tent. It's not the pool tent.
Exactly.
But so thanks for that question. So really, on, just for everyone's information, whenever there's some equipment that needs to be replaced, we really rely on the town manager to make those assessments or recommendations. It's nice that a committee or anybody else brings it up. This isn't really a pool, this isn't a pool item, this is a town item. Thank you. Council, is that it, sir? Thanks for bringing that up. Councilor Ravak, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest expressed an interest in speaking on this topic?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yes. I move that we authorize the town manager to, um, sorry, we authorize the expenditure of up to $8,000 for the purchase of a new tent for the town of Somerset.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I saw Barr. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Excellent job. Once again, I think the, our orientation, orientation sessions have really paid off. Next item, public hearing motion to adopt ordinance number 4213 and ordinance to regulate small wireless telecommunications facilities in the rights of way. Mr. Town Manager, are you, are you going to refer this to the town attorney?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll defer to.
Mr. Town Attorney, thank you.
Mayor, yeah, so this is a re-adoption of the town's small cell wireless code provisions, which were previously adopted by the council, but inadvertently not included in the comprehensive code update that was prepared for us by a third-party vendor. So we just need to re-adopt it so that it can be added to the new code with new section numbers under the, the format of the new code.
Okay, thank you. Council President Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilor Barr?
It's a couple of niggling little things. It looks like this, it was, we reintroduced it in the beginning of April. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep, all right. The ordinance, as it's currently still written, says that it was ordained and ordered this 4th day of February 2019. If we're redoing it, that should probably be updated, right? So at the last.
May add a reference to.
Okay, wait a minute. I, I have a question now. Councilor Barr, question, when, when this was introduced? If this was introduced in April, wouldn't it have to have been reintroduced in June? Wasn't it reintroduced in June? Because remember, council.
It was reintroduced in June, yes, because we did it at our last meeting.
Okay, so council, especially for the newer members, do you, just so you know, that when, when an amendment to the code is introduced, it needs to be voted on within 60 days or it dies. Is that correct, Mr. Town Attorney? So in this case, it was introduced in April, but the council wasn't prepared to vote on it in June. So it was reintroduced. Okay, thank you. Councilor Barr, you have the floor.
All right. So anyway, the, the, the last paragraph of the whereas statement says, now therefore be ordained and ordered this 4th day of February 2019. And I'm going, that needs to be updated surely, right?
Yes, we will add a reference to the reintroduction.
Okay, and then if you go right to the end, it, Marnie Shaw is listed as the president. Presumably, that's now Steve Circo should be the person there.
Absolutely.
And, and Matt hasn't changed his name, so he should be Trolenger, not Trolley.
No, I fixed that.
Not on this version.
Well, when you make your, whoever makes the motion needs to include those amendments to the draft, correct, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, yeah. And I'm looking, I'm looking for my most recent version. Give me a second. But, yeah, yes.
Do you have any other questions, Councilor Barr?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller?
Is what we're doing here tonight, in reference to this, are we just updating? So we're voting on an update. We're not voting on whether we like having cell towers or we like them wherever they are. It's, it's just, it's more procedural right now. Is that, is that correct?
It's like administrative correction.
Okay.
And, oh, yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah. Do you want to confirm that, Mr. Town Attorney?
Yes, one second.
For the record.
Yeah, so I, I did make those corrections in the, in the version I emailed on June 15th.
All right, well.
Well, maybe that's not the version that.
Okay, I probably include, I'm sorry. Yep, I'm seeing that run. I uploaded the wrong, wrong copy of that.
All right, so, well, yeah, but we'll go ahead and use that one so that we, it's clear what edits we're making. So the.
If, can you show it on your screen to make sure that everything that we asked for is.
You better, you better amend the version that the council was given.
Right, exactly. I think that would be best.
So those were the, when it comes time, uh, Councilor Barr, maybe you can make the motion and you can point out all the.
All right.
And to answer Councilmember Heller's comment, yeah, this, this is an ordinance that was already adopted by the town in February of 2019. Then the town went through a process to re-codify its code and hand it over to a publisher to allow the publisher to produce the official code and make amendments to it in the future as ordinances are adopted. And when that was done in October of that same year, this ordinance fell through the cracks somehow. So we just need to re-adopt it so that we can put it back into the official version of the code. Nothing substantive is being changed regarding what was previously adopted in 2019. Now, the council can always revisit these rules and decide, you know, whether they're stringent enough or reasonable or what have you.
You see, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kumar.
Yeah, but.
Councilmember Ravak, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest?
Uh, yes, Kumar Vaswani.
Oh, excellent.
You're gonna love this. Uh, thank you, Matt. Uh, I had submitted comments to the council the first go-around for this. And then I submitted them again last month, although I just realized I forgot to send them to Councilmember Ravak. Regardless, you're enacting new legislation and you should go through the process for accepting comment on that. And when I submitted comments back in 2019, I was told, we've asked our attorney to give us a memo regarding our ability to do some of the things you suggested. So did you get a memo from the town attorney? And were you able to do any of the things I suggested in my comments?
So I think that those are questions for the town attorney.
I'm looking right now. I don't recall writing such a memo or being requested to write such a memo, but I'm looking for that now.
Okay, well, maybe there was some miscommunication, but what I received from Steve Circo was that he asked.
What, what I would say, let, let me ask you a question, Mr. Town Attorney. Is there any urgency to pass this tonight?
Yes, because, you know, if someone were to apply for a deployment, you know, next week, we'd want our regulations on the books. Now, I will say that when this was adopted in February 2019, it was adopted in response to the FCC order, which provided that municipalities are able to impose reasonable regulations with respect to deployments in the right way, including aesthetic standards to avoid clutter and address safety issues. But any such standards had to be published in advance. So I, I think it is important to have, you know, a minimum set of standards on the books. And when this was adopted in 2019, it was adopted with the understanding that it would have to be looked at again, once things settled at the county, state, and federal levels. Because as you know, there was litigation across the country with respect to the FCC order. Uh, Supreme Court just recently denied the petition for cert submitted by some of the litigants. Montgomery County, Gaithersburg, you know, among others, had filed litigation with respect to the FCC order. You know, now that, that all that is settled, I do think it would be a good idea for the council to take a look at this ordinance again and make sure it's still sufficient. But in the meantime, I would recommend that we adopt this to, you know, at least have something on the books in case we do receive.
Okay, okay. So, Mr. Vaswani, what, whatever the council decides tonight is, is not under my purview, but I will make sure that, um, your memo is processed so that if perhaps the council decides to make amendments to this law, it's sort of been on the books, that they could, they can amend it in the, they can amend it in the future. And I'm sorry that, that somehow with all this transition, that perhaps it didn't get analyzed by the town attorney. But I, but I will make sure that it does. Okay?
Thank you. Can I just say, I don't think it goes far enough. I think the ordinance needs to be more extensive in terms of public safety and aesthetics, but I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, well, thank you. You know, I, you know, this is a very complicated issue and we're all still learning on how best the town needs to respond to the, to the, the threat that's coming. So we will, I will make sure that, uh, which I think I mentioned to you on the phone recently. I'll make sure that, that all those, um, issues that you raise are given due consideration. Thank you. Is there, um, Mr. Town Manager, did anyone else wish to speak?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
Yep. Okay, I propose that we re-adopt ordinance 4213 and ordinance to regulate small wireless telecommunications facilities in the rights of way with the following procedural amendments. That in the introduction, we indicate that the ordinance was reintroduced at our meeting on June the 7th, 2021. That we note that when it is approved, that the appropriate date in 2021 is assigned in addition to the prior date of 2019. And we note that Steve Circo is the current president of the town council. And we ensure that Matt Trolinger's name is correctly spelled.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you very much. The next item is, um, a, a motion to introduce ordinance number 4212 and ordinance to amend the code of ordinances to allow administrative approval for the replacement of air conditioning units and heat cooling pumps. And I think this is, isn't this Council President Circo's? Isn't this his introduction?
I am happy to, to introduce it. But I, I do want to give credit to, um, Franny Peel was one of the, the leaders behind this initiative and I appreciated her working on it. The idea is to, um, simplify some of town administrative requirements or burdens on residents of Somerset. And also, um, allow the council to focus perhaps on more substantive issues than reviewing, uh, HVAC replacement applications to replace an HVAC unit, uh, in the same location with the same power size. So this is, this is just a modest little tweak to the code.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Barr, do you have any questions?
Uh, well, I have a confession more than questions and it's, it's also, I'm going to complicate things, not for this. I, I do want this to succeed. Um, confession is that I'm installing a new heat pump, actually, and I need to get a town permit. Um, and, and we'll, we'll do that in, in due order, but I want to do it after this passes for reasons that should be clear. Um, but beyond that.
Well, this tonight, remember, this is just the introduction.
Yeah, 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 all right. And the other, the point is that I'm installing what's known as a variable force heat pump and furnace. And these are becoming more common in town. They do not have a constant noise output, in fact. They have, at their lowest level, which is the level that is operating most of the time, very quiet noise output. And at their highest level, still quiet noise output, but not as quiet as their very quiet noise output. Our, our ordinance is only allowed to address noise. And as I said, the latest design of these things is now have variable noise levels. And I'm just throwing that out there and we can carry on, but that is where it is now. We may need to rethink that.
Okay, well, that will be an excellent topic for a future work session. But do you have any other questions about this proposal?
No, again, I thank Franny who did most of the work on this.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Heller, do you have any questions?
No, just a confession that years ago I installed a replacement HVAC unit.
Okay, don't put this on the record. Don't put that on the record. Okay, Councilman Kumar, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Ravak?
No questions.
Okay, thank, this does not require a public hearing. Council, are you prepared? Council President Circa, do you want to move the introduction of this?
I move that we introduce ordinance 4-21-2 to amend the code of ordinances to allow administrative approval for the replacement of air conditioning units and heat cooling pumps.
Second, thank you. There's a second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. And to refresh everyone's memory, now the process begins. So this, this legislation gets published and then it is subject to a hearing and comments. And it will be probably placed on the agenda for next month. Uh, thank you. The next item, public hearing motion to approve of a letter to Montgomery County Executive Elrich addressing concerns regarding ZTA 1907. And I am going to turn this over to the town manager to refer it to the town attorney and thank him for all the work he's done on this topic. And if you could synthesize what this is all about, because this is a little bit separate from the bigger discussion the county, county council is having about small cell.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the county council is going to adopt a zoning text amendment to change the rules with respect to where small cell towers can be located in terms of zoning and setbacks, how far from houses in particular and what procedural requirements will apply based on the type of application. The zoning text amendment that the county council will adopt contains some of the procedural requirements, but a lot is left to executive regulation. Currently, the executive regulations date back to 1996 and were last amended in 2003 and involved application procedures for older technology that are really outdated because under the FCC order I previously mentioned, there are shot clocks or application deadlines, processing deadlines, that the town and the county must conform to when reviewing applications. And so we, we noted, looking at the existing executive regulations, it's not clear how new 5G small cell applications will be processed because the existing rules are outdated. And so. And so one of the purposes of this letter is to ask the county executive, when you get around to revising these regulations, as a result of the county's ETA, you keep certain things in mind. And, you know, the things that we want kept in mind are that, as is the case with the existing regulations, there be a notice requirement that the county provide the town notice that an application has been submitted and allow some manner of input from the town. And also suggests that when the tower committee of the, of the county, which reviews these applications, when their wireless telecommunications engineer reviews an application, that they also review the application for conformance with town requirements. And that may be a big ask, but it would be nice because the town currently does not have an engineer on staff with respect, with respect to telecommunications.
So what you're, so can you also further clarify that you are encouraging other municipalities?
Yes.
And, and, and I should say that I'm signing on to this letter in my personal capacity. But, and any of you can sign on to the letter. The idea tonight is that as a council, you approve the request that is being made. And, and the town, our town attorney has been one of the leaders in the county on behalf of the municipalities to protect us from the coming threat. And, and so I'm personally encouraging all the other mayors and town councils to endorse what is contained in the letter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would add that a couple of towns that I represent are interested in this and you know, frankly, some of the smaller towns were looking for one of the bigger towns to be the leader. And Mayor Slavin's been at the forefront of this issue as well as town resident Susanna Goodman, who authored the first version of this draft along with counsel that she retained, telecommunications counsel Mark Del Bianco. And then I've, I've promised this letter to a couple of towns already.
Okay, thank you. Counsel President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Barr, do you have any questions?
No, I read the letter. It sounds detailed and sensible. Advice to county executive with, with a request that is entirely reasonable, given our circumstances.
Thank you. Counsel member Heller.
No questions.
Thank you. Counsel member Kumar.
No questions, it's a no brainer.
Thank you. Counselor Rovak.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, you prepared to make a motion?
I move that we approve the letter to Montgomery County Executive Elrich addressing concerns regarding ZTA nineteen dash zero seven on small cell antenna deployment.
Thank you. Sir, a second. I see Counselor Kumar. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Town Attorney, for your hard work on this. The next item is the agenda item that was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Heller. And I think that the council has enough information about it. So I will ask and start with questions. Counsel President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you for remembering to add it.
Thank you. Counselor Member Barr.
The only question is the pool closed for normal activities in July thirty-first when the town Olympics are going on.
I don't know.
Well, I'll let the chair answer the question.
The idea would be that the deep end lane lines would be closed, like similar to swim meet, but that the big pool, the main pool would still be open.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Heller, do you have any further comments or questions?
I just think this is something we, we should do. I, I think having a town Olympics would, would, you know, get us a lot of camaraderie and excitement and hopefully something we'll do every year. So I hope you'll all support this.
And thank you, Counselor Heller, for shepherding this through during the transition. Counselor Member Kumar, do you have any questions?
Just a clarification, this means a slightly more dollar amount to the pool budget. Does that figure in how we motion to move this forward?
Okay, Counsel. Mr. Town Manager, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I, I don't have right now what, what the dollar amount would be for that.
I believe it.
I believe in the past, we have had a provision that allowed the pool to stay open one hour late, one night per month. So I think this would be one extra night and I, I.
Do we have to account for that in a motion that is forthcoming on this? Do we need to, is the budget aspect of this?
I, I don't, I don't believe so at this point because the council has already approved of extra money to go into the pool management line item. You could choose to add extra money because.
You answered it. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Member Rovak, do you have any questions?
Um, no, my only question was just like on the, I guess it, there's a past precedent to keep the pool open an hour later. I mean, do you, for those food truck events, do you think that that just gets like excitement from the older kids? Or is it necessary to keep it open an hour later?
Let's let the, the, the chair of the committee answer that.
So in the past, we've had one late night swim per month. We just, we didn't get one for June, which was part of the idea of doing two in August. And honestly, we might come back to you and say, let's do one in September as well, if they're highly attended and, you know, good success. But the idea of the, the food truck in conjunction with it was just, that'll bring even more people. So when we tailored back the hours, the pool for the longest time used to actually be open till ten PM on Friday and Saturday nights. And we cut that out because it wasn't very highly attended when we looked at the numbers. And then, so we did get some pushback from certain residents who said, oh, I love that nine to ten, or I love being able to stay past nine. So that was where we instituted the once a month late night swims. I, I get a lot of positive feedback from residents about the food trucks, especially with the swim meets. So we just sort of thought, well, you know, why don't put them hand in hand? If the food trucks will draw more people out and more people means most likely more people want to stay a little later, let's just do the two events together. I mean, honestly, if it was up to me, we'd have a food truck every Friday, but that's, that's just me.
No more questions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest indicated they would wish to speak on this topic?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor member Heller, are you, are you prepared to make a motion?
I am prepared. Okay, I make a motion that we, we allow a food truck to come to the pool on Friday, July thirtieth and keep the pool open an extra hour as well. And then on Saturday, July thirty-first, to allow the, the town to have a town Olympics at the pool.
Okay, is there a second?
We, we also have August, there were August.
Are we doing, I do August now? If I can do August, can I throw that in?
You can, you can add it.
Okay, then, um, thank you, Kumar, rather Kabir. On, and Friday, August thirteenth and, and Friday, August twenty-seventh, to have a food truck at the pool and to have an extra hour each, each of those nights. Extend the pool hours each of those nights.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I see Counselor Rovak first. Is there discussion? I just want to point out one thing for the benefit of Counselor Rovak, who might not know that the reason why the food trucks have to be given permission is because food trucks are not legal in the town. So an exemption has to be given, and that's something that the council is going to be working on in the future, right? About whether to change that. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. And now we will go to our last item, which is the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll just run through some of, some of my notes for you. The first is to say that the, we continue to get some bills that are for June. And so this is sort of a preliminary look at, you know, where we end up for the fiscal year. But we'll continue to tweak those. And I will, I'll plan to have, I'll also include in the month of August, I'll include not just the month of July, so our first month of the new fiscal year, but I'll also include. So look back on, on where things look for fiscal year twenty-one as well. We talked about the Beesle. I actually was able to talk with not the B insurance. One that we were recommended by Legit for the insurance, but Liberty Mutual actually had a a policy that's about, that's three hundred dollars premium for a one million dollar policy that covers beekeeping activities and honey. So I think that's pretty much in line with what was passed at the last council meeting. I'm, I'm, I'm supposed to talk with Syracuse with the mayor this week. I did want to circle back on some of these code updates. One thing that I, I'm maybe flagging now to, to discuss later. I, I think the town should at least consider having Ron update our code and moving away from general code. My understanding is that that's what Ron does for the, the vast majority of his clients. And there's a couple of different code updates that while, while they have, you know, they, they consider it a, a dynamic code that's easy to, to export to PDF and things. I don't know that it's necessarily serving the town if it's not updated continually. And so they have a whole section of, of new laws that they're not incorporating into our code unless we pay additional money to them on top of just the annual annual maintenance cost to them. So it, I, I want to get more information and have a follow-up conversation, but I, I did want to flag that issue because I, I don't know that the, the arrangement that we have is, is, is working out for us super well right now. One county-wide thing, I don't know if you all had seen, but the Montgomery County executive released a climate action plan and another issue that I think maybe I can work with the environment committee to, to assess that. And it might be a good long-term goal to have the environment committee help develop perhaps our own climate action plan. I think that does align with a lot of their recommendations to the town anyway. So I think that would be a, a, a transition that, that made sense and worked pretty seamlessly. Additionally, there's the, the Thrive Montgomery twenty fifty that I think we've, we've sort of penciled into the next council work session. And I know that we've talked maybe about ways that maybe the town can continue to, to follow county regulations and how they might affect the town. And just flagging that issue. At the July meeting, I'll have audits, a write-up for you on audit service providers. So that, that can be approved at the August meeting. Then I'm actually meeting with one of the, one of the, one of the proposers, bidders, I should say, with the audit committee tomorrow morning. And as Robin said, we're scheduled to get our American Rescue Plan Act funds in the month of July. I just sent in some follow-up paperwork that basically was just affirming the town's fiscal standing and what our, what our budget was. So I'm still, still waiting for additional guidance from, from the state and follow up on exactly what, what our final numbers will be. But should be getting that any day now and sometime within the next week. So hopefully should have an update for you soon on that. You, you all had my report, so I, as opposed to just going over it line by line, I think I'll just end it there in terms of oral presentation, but happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you for that excellent report. Counsel President Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you for the report, Matt.
Thank you. Counselor Member Barr, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Heller.
No, thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Counselor Member Kumar.
Matt, thanks. Thanks for the report. I was wondering what's the status on the A-hole process of streetlights? You mentioned in your report, you know, group of residents that suggested that I think there are fourteen lights on Surrey that are broken, obstructed or something of the other. But that's just Surrey and related streets. And I think you had mentioned that in the past, there's been a practice of Wayne reviewing, sort of doing a street walk to check which lights are functioning or not. So I just wanted to know how you are thinking about all streetlights? What will be the process moving forward? Any, any deadlines on your, on your mind? So that's.
Yes, thank, thank you for that. I don't have a specific update for you at this point, but that is on my, my agenda for our next staff meeting to talk with Wayne about how that was done before. I know he has done that. I know he did that for Martin's additions when I was working over there. So to figure out kind of what our, what our schedule will be to make that part of our regular routine forward.
Okay, well, that's a good answer to the micro question that you're asking, Counsel member. The, the big picture is, and I think Counselor Barr knows about this, is that is, is probably most familiar, that, you know, we're still waiting for when the, the, the program is going to be put in place. And I have a relationship with Donna Cooper, the president of Pepco, and I've been, she, you know, it's hard to get on her schedule. And so, and so.
Sorry, Jeff. I'm being hung. Place for what?
I'm sorry.
I missed your words there. Program put in place for what?
The, the, this, the new street, I'll let Robin start with it.
Yeah, the, Pepco has a submission with the Public Service Corporation of Maryland, which is to go to all LED lights across.
Hold on, this is unrelated to the LED issue, please. This is simply bulbs not in place, trees in front of light, it's a micro issue. I just want to be very clear that we can fix this now with simple processes and that will have.
I know, but you, I know, but you were asking.
Let me say a little bit more. That decision is due any day now. And.
Hallelujah.
Been in touch with, let, let me finish. I've been in touch with Tammy Watkins, who is our representative. And I'm, she's supposed to be getting in touch with me very soon on that decision. And what I'm trying to do is prioritize us so we get there.
That's where, that's where.
Now, one of the points about LED lights is that they direct all of their light downwards rather than have it scattered, which is what happens with high sodium vapor and mercury, which means that we will get more light from these bulbs when they come.
I'm.
So.
Hold on, LED, if anyone wants to see them on impact, go to Dorset. There are a bunch of. Again, micro issue, short term, huge impact.
I know, but the point of the, the point of the matter. I know, but the point of the, the point of the matter is, Councilor Kumar, is that a lot of the complaints that you're hearing about will be solved, as Councilor Barr points out, when we get LED lights.
But not all of them.
I want to de-link these issues. We can submit a report to Pepco and a bulb can be replaced.
Yes.
Extremely important.
But we do-
Very badly lit corners of this town.
But we do that.
Must address that. And it's easy to do it, and LED is taking us further.
I know, but just so you know that we do, we do follow up on all those current-
I know, I know, Matt has, Matt has. I know that. And I know that he, that's, I'm just checking on the overall process.
Yeah.
Which he answered. I have two more questions, Matt.
Yeah, go ahead.
The website, uptown website development, it was not in your report. I just wanted to flag that. It would be good to catch up on that front at a future date, whenever it makes sense.
Well, Matt, well, Matt can answer that question.
Yeah, just, just really quickly, the, they are going to be at the communications committee meeting tomorrow morning, and so we'll get kind of a full update on that. And so, yeah, absolutely. I'll be sure to update you guys.
And you mentioned the town code. I was surprised to discover that the code on the website isn't dated. And that there are multiple updates that are not, this is, again, I think, again, small but big issue. That it's important for town residents to have access to the up-to-date, most recent code. And so if we can take the steps to do that, I think your recommendation makes a lot of sense to me. So please let, let the council know what we need to do to make that happen. And one last thing, you had mentioned that maybe this is part of the website development, but maybe we can de-link this, similar to the LEDs, take some short-term positive measures, which is, you had mentioned you were going to put up updated FAQs for town residents that you were going through a review process. Maybe you had brought this up during orientation, and I'd be meaning to ask you. So if, again, at a later date, if you have any plans to update on us on that front, that would be great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Matt, did you want, did you want to did you want to answer that?
I don't, I don't have, I don't really have anything to update on it at the moment, but
Well, except that it's on your list.
Yeah, I'd be, yeah, I'll be sure to make a note of it and be sure to-
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up.
And thank you for everything you do. Very grateful.
Councilmember Ravak, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thanks, Matt.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Before I take a motion to adjourn, I want to remind you that the, the meeting for the council work session is Monday, July nineteenth at seven PM. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Great meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hi, everyone.